Well, it's cute.
And I said, well, what color ink is it? And they said, white. I said, will that work? And they did, and that's perfect.
When I can draw, when I can draw.
Yeah, it is.
And you learn what you're trying to do. Look, I finally got the wood like.
I'm trying to figure out what I wrote. Okay, we'll call to order the board workshop, March twenty eighth, twenty twenty two, of East Point Community Schools, at six thirty four. Please call the roll. Well, before you call the roll, I want to remind everybody, you have to turn your mic on. If your mic's not on, people can't hear you. Okay? I know there was something going on last time. People thought their mic was on and it wasn't on or whatever, but just make sure you turn your mic on there. All of working.
Correction at a time.
Six thirty what?
Five thirty.
Five thirty.
Oh, I'm sorry. Five thirty four.
Five thirty three.
Five thirty four. I forgot we're starting earlier. I'm earlier on this one. Have it. Sorry. Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Roscoe.
Here.
Ms. Rayford.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Grunberg. Dr. Early here. Ms. DeVito and Mr. Ward excused.
Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item on the agenda is approve of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Please move for motion to approve of the agenda.
We already had it. It's so moved. Oh, it's so moved. Okay. Support? You support?
Support, support, support.
Okay. Please call the vote.
Mrs. Rayford.
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe. Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Grunberg.
Yes.
Dr. Early, yes.
Motion carries. We have hearing of the public. Does anyone wish to be heard? Anyone wish to be heard? Seeing none, that opens and closes at five thirty six. Next, we need a motion to go into executive closed session for security planning.
Make a motion that we go into closed session for supportive planning.
We have support. Please call the vote.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
Mrs. Rayford.
Yes.
Mr. Grunberg.
Yes.
Dr. Early, yes.
Okay, we're going to adjourn to the conference room.
You know it's one right there, right?
No.
So you don't have to go all the way down the hall. Mary, you know it's one right there, right?
No.
So you don't have to go all the way down the hall.
How do we make that happen?
I didn't say agenda. I just wanted to say that workshop is adjourned at six thirty.
Are we going into regular session?
Yes.
I'm recording.
I'd like to call and order the regular meeting of the East Point Community Schools Board of Education, March twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two at six thirty-two. Please call the roll.
Mr. Williams.
Present.
Ms. Rayford, here. Mr. Roscoe.
Present.
Mr. Grunberg.
Here.
Dr. Early, here. Mr. Ward and Mrs. DeVita, excused.
Okay, if we could all stand for the pledge, Dan will lead us in the pledge.
My presidency stands to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, next item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Before we do that, there's an item that needs to be added. After number eight, add a new number nine. And please renumber nine on, respectively to that, so nine would become ten, ten would become eleven, and so on. And the new nine will be closed session attorney-client privilege. With that, I'd be willing to accept a motion for approval of the agenda.
Please throw for motion to approve of the agenda.
Report.
Please call the vote.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
Mrs. Rayford.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Grunberg.
Yes.
Dr. Early, yes.
Okay, next we have consent agenda, is there a motion for consent agenda?
Motion to for the consent agenda.
Support.
Please call the vote.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Rayford.
No.
Mr. Grunberg.
Yes.
And Dr. Early, yes.
Okay, next we have superintendent's report. Since Dr. McClellan's not here, I'm sure Mrs. Gibson's gonna take care of that for us, right?
Yep, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This evening, we will be having a presentation from our pre-K buildings, which will include the Early Learning Center, Forest Park, as well as Crescentwood. So I'd like to introduce to you this evening Sue Miller, Principal of Crescentwood, and Heather Agueros, the Principal of Forest Park Elementary School, and then Valerie Jens, the Principal of the Early Learning Center. And if you'll just give me a few moments, I will have their presentation for you.
Good evening, President Grunberg, other board members, and other employees of East Point Community Schools. So we are obviously super proud to always come to the Board of Education and present things that we are doing at the lower elementary school. Today, we're specifically talking about some social-emotional programs. Next, please. So we wanted to highlight some social-emotional support programs that we have at the K-two buildings. We have social workers at both buildings. We have a positivity project. This is the third year that Crescentwood has had this positivity project, and the first year that Forest Park has instituted this program. And we'll talk more specifically about that program as we go. Second step is a social-emotional program that our resocial workers do with our kindergarteners. They'll go into the classrooms, they'll talk about following directions, calm-down strategies, making friends, all of those different kinds of things, specifically for our kindergarteners that maybe haven't had a preschool program before, where they haven't learned any of those social-emotional programs. Star swap, we have at Crescentwood, where boys and girls or teachers will swap classrooms, and teachers will do fun and engaging activities with those boys and girls, so that way it kind of builds a sense of community. So teachers are getting to know all of the boys and girls in the building, not just the boys and girls in their classroom. We have grade-level teams in both buildings, and teachers really work collaboratively and get to know all of the boys and girls within their collaboration, within their grade level. And so teachers can not only support teachers, other teachers instructionally, but they can also support students, because they get to know those students, and that can help out in that way as well. Think sheets for students, it's just another way, if someone kind of needs a timeout or so, it has boys and girls sit down, think about what did you do, what you do next time, and it gets boys and girls to reflect on their own behaviors. Support from other staff, other staff members within grade levels. That's happening all throughout, I know, all of our three buildings. Our social workers are also making referrals to county programs to help support those social-emotional needs. And we also have events from the Early Learning Center over to the K-two buildings. And then we also have transition events, not only to Bellevue, but to Pleasant View as well. So the teachers are coming over. I know Ms. Piper came over and read to the second graders during March's reading month. So all throughout the year, we're doing those transition events. We have lots of parent involvement, even though we had COVID over the last couple of years, our parents are continually involved with children learning, communication with parents continually on a day-to-day basis. That daily communication through texts, emails, phone calls, notes, our dojo, in-person before school, after school, those parents that drop off, pick up, those teachers are having those quick, important conversations that need to be had. I know at Crescentwood, there were more teachers that gave out their personal cellphone numbers during COVID than any other time in my career, so that was just amazing. They're really putting themselves out there to make themselves accessible to the parents. We have involvement with Title One and special school events. We're now just starting to kick off some of our Title One events, because we're now letting more parents in the building, so we look forward to inviting you to those and coming out to those. We have support with parents with picture We have support with parents with Picture Day or any special events during lunch hours, recess times. And we're always meeting with parents with meetings throughout the year. We're now meeting back in person with lots of these things, but parents are involved in IEPs or behavior meetings, conferences that we have twice a year, individualized reading plans. Teachers are reaching out and having those meetings with parents as well. The Positivity Project is one of the projects that we're super excited and happy about. I'm glad that Forest Park jumped on board with Crescentwood, because then I've gained ideas from Ms. Agueros's Forest Park team, and I think she's gained some ideas from us. So again, it's really nice when both buildings are doing the same kind of projects, because we just expand the project and make it better. So this Positivity Project, it empowers the boys and girls to build positive relationships. And there's twenty-four character strengths that they learn about themselves and about others. So this week is humor. There's integrity, perseverance, curiosity, prudence. Just twenty-four different character traits that they learn, and they focus on one character trait per week. And the unique thing about this program, it's consistent daily instruction, and so during breakfast time, boys and girls will have a fifteen-minute lesson during that time, and it's really reinforcing other people matter, which, when they go out into the real world, that's kind of the premise of everything. We know the majority of jobs that the boys and girls are gonna do, and everything they do in life, they're gonna be working with other people. So if they have that philosophy of other people matter, it's just going to make them better individuals. So it helps them to build those positive relationships by not only identifying those character traits within themselves, but within other people as well. Again, there's three of our components there, that fifteen minutes, common language, within the whole entire building, all the teachers are talking about that character trait of the week. And lots of times, these words come up in stories or in lessons, and so it's just just weaved throughout their entire day. And we did this year a survey, this is the first year that we started off with a survey, and those questions were there, and so we're gonna do a year-end survey as well, so we can collect some data and to really see the impact of this program.
Hi, good evening. So at each school, we find a way to highlight the students and who is really displaying the character traits, or the character strengths each week. So at Crescentwood, they have a golden ticket. And each classroom, the classroom teacher has two tickets per classroom, and those students that displayed that character strength that week, they will receive the golden ticket. And then Mrs. Miller has a treasure chest in her class, or her office, and the students get to come down, and they will receive a prize out of the treasure chest. At Forest Park, we have Character Students of the Week, and their name is displayed on a wall, so you'll see in just a moment, we have a picture down the front hallway right now, we have everybody's name. So whatever that character strength of was of the week, so it'll be like creativity, and their students, the student's name is on the wall. So by the end of the year, we hope to have it through the entire school. And it's really cute, the kids see their name on the wall, and you know, they're dancing in the hallway, because they're so excited. So we have about two to three students per classroom, and we have what's called Campfire Conversations. So every Monday, at the beginning of the day, so about nine o'clock, we have a grade levels. They come down in grade levels. Due to COVID, we don't have full school assemblies right now. So they come down in the grade level, and we talk about the character strength of the week. We talk about what it looks like, what it looks like in the classroom, how they can display it throughout the week. And we highlight just different ways that they can display it that week, and what are they gonna do to be the student that can be the character, a student of the week. During COVID, when we had to kind of shut down from assemblies, we found a way to do it a little differently, and we did virtual meetings every Monday. So we were still able to meet as a school, and the kids really liked it, actually. They would, you know, raise their hand virtually and come up to the microphone, and they would still answer questions and still participate as a group. So we were able to do that. There are some photographs here. So we were still able to display the character strengths, so the kids can still see the character strengths as they go through the school. They're displayed in different ways. There's an example of the golden tickets that they receive at Crescentwood, so they know what character strength that they displayed, and can come down and receive their prize from the treasure, the treasure chest. And then there are some examples of the signs on the wall at Forest Park. I gave a little example of our virtual meeting that we have. And then there is our Campfire Conversations that we have, and they were drawing some pictures from their activity, and that is our first grade and kindergarten that we had there.
Good evening, everyone. So at the Early Learning Center, we have a great-parent-teacher connection. We have ninety-seven percent of our families connected to Dojo, which is amazing. Our daily family discussions are happening at drop-off and pickup, so we're always having those open lines of communication with our families. For GSRP specifically, there are requirements that we have to follow that are mandated by the state, and we have home visits in the fall, and again, at the end of the year. Prior to COVID, we would go to their homes and meet with the families in their own homes, so we can kind of see where the students are being raised, you know, what they're being raised around, that type of thing, and really get to know the families that way. So that's what happens at the beginning of the year, and then again, at the end of the year. We are starting back home visits in the homes in the fall, unless something changes before then, which we're hoping it doesn't. Parent-teacher conferences, we have fall and spring conferences that are also required by GSRP. We are required to have a hundred percent participation, and we have to demonstrate that we've shown that we've attempted to make those contacts two or three times, if we are unable to schedule a conference with a family member. If you can see up there, our current spring participation from conferences we just had last week, our ECSE was only fifty percent. We've struggled with that program a little bit, getting parents out, but since we've started Zoom conferences, the percentage has actually raised. So I think those families are a little bit more comfortable having, you know, or maybe their ability is a little bit easier via Zoom versus coming into the actual building and meeting. So those, those participation rates are seem going up. GSRP, as of right now, we have eighty-two percent that have completed our conferences last week, and we still have some that are possibly coming this Friday for conferences, because they couldn't make it last week, or we really, really try to work around our families' schedules and get them in as, as much as we possibly can. And then the three-year-old program, which was started this year, we have two classrooms, and eighty percent of those families were able to get in and complete those conferences as well. We have parent engagement meetings in the fall and the spring. That's a requirement of GSRP. We include the other programs as well in those meetings. And then our parent engagement activities that are coming up. Last year, we did a Title Four Flower Planning Day in May. That's coming up in May again. Hopefully, we'll have as great of a turnout this year as we did last year. I think maybe eight students didn't have a family member or, you know, friend come in to help them plant flowers around the building. So that was a great turnout last year. We are gonna have a Title Four Family Game Night as well, which is coming up in May or June. Haven't quite figured out the logistics of that yet, but we're working on that right now. And then we have our pre-K graduation as well. Regarding social emotional, we have our ASQ-SE training, which is the Ages and Stages Questionnaire. It's a social-emotional screener to see where our students are at when they're entering the program. We are getting trained on that May sixth through the ISD, so that we can fully implement it next year in the fall. But currently, we are using creative curriculum as our curriculum for the programs, and there is a strong emotional, social-emotional component to that curriculum. For example, like, we do homestyle meals. So we have homestyle, family-style meals, where we're sitting down at the tables, passing around the food. With COVID, obviously, we're not passing the bowls right now. Teachers are serving the food, but teachers sit at the tables with the students, engage in conversations, try to get to know the students, you know, what their interests are, that type of stuff, and try to engage, help the students engage in conversations with each other as well. The other thing I wanted to mention that I did not put up there is we do have a visit scheduled to go to the K-two buildings in May, so that the students can see what schools they're gonna be going to, and meet potential teachers, and meet Ms. Miller and Ms. Agueros, and hopefully that alleviates some of the, you know, nervousness about the kids, you know, going to a new building, because they really, really like it where they're at. These are just some cute pictures. I, I just had to throw them up there. I didn't have any with, you know, parents right now, because our parent events are all at the end of the year. So, and I didn't take any during conferences, but I was like, what, I gotta put some cute pictures of kids up there. So that's just what that is.
Thank you so much, ladies. Does the board have any questions for the, Ms. Jens, Ms. Agueros, or Ms. Miller?
I have a comment. Last Thursday, I was at Forest Park, and Ms. Aguero, I missed seeing you there. But I read the theme of truth, and to two classes, and one of the things I asked the students was, how important was it to tell the truth? And, you know, I just love the honesty of kids. They said, it's important, because if you lie, people won't believe you. And, I mean, that just really touched my heart. They enjoyed the readings. I'm really sorry I missed you that day, but I enjoy reading to the kids.
I have one. This is probably just anecdotal, and it's gonna be directed at you, Mrs. Miller. It's not a bad one. But I'm sure you don't have data right off the top of your head for it. But the ELC has continued to grow, it seems like, quite a bit over the last few years, correct? I would say so. I think we've realized that as a board as well, too. The question I have is, kindergartners, and I'm asking you because you've been a principal a bit longer in our district than Ms. Agueros. A little bit longer. But anyways, anecdotally, I mean, benefits. Big benefits, huge benefits, would you say? I mean, I think it's probably a stupid question on my part, but I would like to kind of hear it come from your lips.
That's, that's okay. We do have the numbers as far as our data and enrollment, and at Crescentwood, this is, I think eleventh year at Crescentwood, having the Early Learning Center, since I moved over there eleven years ago, it's really helped to stabilize my enrollment.
But I mean, the preparedness of the students as well, too, coming into kindergarten, from the Early Learning Center. It does help our students be much more prepared come kindergarten.
For sure, for sure.
So if parents have an opportunity to take advantage of the Early Learning Center and get signed up, they should.
Exactly, yes. Not only the benefits academically of preparing them, but preparing them for just the rigor of school, sitting in a classroom chair. And our summer program as well, I'm gonna give kudos to that, because I know boys and girls that have been through our summer program, in addition to the Early Learning Center, or one or the other, the benefits of them going through either one of those programs is substantial, and those boys and girls are more successful, and you know, tend to move on and just gain concepts and skills. They're more mature and able to handle lots and lots of things a little bit better than the average child, I guess.
And then one last comment. You started off by thanking us for having you. I just want to say we're very happy to have you, because we really enjoy hearing the good work and the hard work that you and your staff do with our children. Because quite quite often here at the table, we have to deal with adult issues, and it's better off to actually hear about the kids and how they're, what you're doing with them, and how they're excelling, and how they're growing, and things like that. So we really appreciate it, so, anytime.
Thank you. Thank you so much, ladies. Next up, I'd like to show the board just a few wanderings around the district from the cameras of myself and a few principals. I thought we'd just highlight a few images for you. The Shamrock Spirit was in full force this month, and with March's Reading Month as well. So amazing things happening in the Journeys. Lots of readers, all kinds of guest readers and authors coming into our schools this month. We have book fairs happening over the course of the month, and the children are really enjoying all the guests coming into the classrooms. We haven't been able to have the guests in previous years, so they're even more excited now to have guests coming into our buildings. Fifth-grade band is something that is near and dear to my heart, I know. We tried to, we started the band, and the board approved the fifth-grade band. And prepare yourselves, because when I was at Pleasant View Elementary School, let's see if it will work. Bless you. So for those of you who don't know much about learning to play musical instruments, and for those of you that do, to get all of the students simultaneously playing a musical instrument is a feat unto itself. Teacher Bex has done a commendable job. We also have amazing, two amazing music teachers that joined our East Point team that are helping us to live into that vision for our children being provided an opportunity for music, and we hope that that builds some momentum into our middle school and high school programs as well. We did have a board workshop earlier on school safety. Ms. Tab, the CTE Safety Officer, has a number of connections still in the Detroit Public Police Department, and so officers recently came to our schools and visited. Then we were featured in the CNG as well for celebrating our CTE and culinary programs. Then a miraculous thing happened. I walked into the high school, and there were students in the parking lot eating cookies with big grins on their faces. And what do I see when I walk into the high school is Mrs. Sineth Jones and Chef Shu. And Chef Shu and the CTE students made over five hundred cookies, and they were passing them out to students as they were leaving for the day. And, you know, I know it's not an academic highlight, but to have joy and love, and somebody seeing students and seeing that everybody likes to get a cookie on a Friday is kind of an amazing thing. And I've never seen high school, like, kids were shocked that somebody was giving them something at the high school. What an amazing opportunity to build relationships and to show students that we care about them. Upcoming nights, I'd like to make sure that the board is aware of, as well as the community. Forest Park is having a literacy night on Wednesday, March thirtieth, from five to six thirty. I hear there's an amazing turnout in reservations and RSVPs. Over three hundred families and students have RSVP'd for that event. On Tuesday, tomorrow, five thirty to seven, Bellevue Elementary will be having a literacy night. And EMS did have a literacy night scheduled for tomorrow, Tuesday, but they have had to reschedule, and are looking at April nineteenth. Wednesday, March thirtieth this week, we have a Pleasant View Book Club presentation happening at three thirty. This Friday, April first, is a half-day for students. Our staff will be completing the records. Families and students, this is your last week to get your missing assignments done. If you haven't gotten your work done in your virtual classes, you are encouraged to make sure that you're getting moving on that. We will be on spring break next week. We certainly wish all of our staff, administrators, and students a great vacation, and hope that that time is rejuvenating for them. We do begin testing when we return back from spring break. Parents who have students at the high school will need to watch for the eighth and ninth grade and eleventh grade testing on the thirteenth, and then on the fourteenth, tenth, and eleventh grade will be testing. There will be asynchronous learning for the grade levels not being tested at the school. And last but certainly not least, please come and see our K-two buildings for kindergarten roundup. That will be Wednesday, April twentieth, in-person at ten AM. That will be Wednesday, April 20th, in person at 10:00 a.m. And I love what you, what you are planning now. We've had such a tremendous response from Zoom meetings and parent conferences. The accessibility to teachers, when there may be other barriers, has been high. We are offering a virtual kindergarten roundup at 6:00 p.m. for both schools. So, please watch, families, and encourage your neighbors that if they are unable to come to the in-person kindergarten roundup, we will be having an evening event on Wednesday, April 20th. Thank you so much, and that concludes the superintendent's report this evening.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have first hearing of the public, I think is the only one today. Just a public, we have a public hearing. We'll open that up at 6:58. Does anyone wish to be heard? Does anyone wish to be heard? Seeing none, we'll close that at 6:58 as well, too. Oh, that's for the Esser funds, right? Doesn't Robert got to speak today? I'm sorry.
Mr. Carlesso would like to invite you up.
It's two different hearings, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I was jumping ahead. Didn't mean to forget about you, Robert.
Good evening, everybody. This, we're going to be doing periodic updates on the American Rescue Plan Esser III portion of the federal funding for public schools. We had our first, our first community update about six, eight weeks ago. We plan to do them once a quarter or so going forward for probably the next year and a half until the funds are, are spent. As you recall, we did a community survey. We surveyed parents, students, staff at each of our buildings, and we had the results and compiled them and found out what was important to our stakeholders as far as where to prioritize spending of this money. And the three most important things, and they're all kind of bunched together, was, was improving indoor air quality and comfort, providing social emotional support, and repairing and improving our facilities. We submitted a budget back in December of 2021 to Michigan Department of Education, and that's been approved. It wasn't the, we were awarded $18 million. That budget had roughly $12 million in it because that's all that was released at the point in time. So, as we go on in the process, we'll be amending the budget and having the full $18 million in our budget. But just to let you know what's happened, that was, one that happened so far, we have spent, we have employed five behavioral therapists in our buildings, so they're in there right now, helping our children. Media materials for K-12 school libraries, we're in the planning process right now. Patrick Taylor, our school media professional, has been meeting with the architects, and we're putting a design for the buildings and a list of what to purchase, include floor coverings, furniture, and library materials. And we also have put out to bid the abatement of all the classroom floor tiles in our four elementary buildings and Early Learning Center. So, that will be coming to the board the last meeting in April, the second meeting in April. And also part of that renovation is the bathrooms and the classrooms in the Gang Johns And there's a, I just wanted to let everyone know that there is a place on our website under School Improvements, there's our own heading, and that's going to have all the projects that are ongoing in our Esser funds. And architects are also going to be putting together like an easel or some type of board for each building, indicating like sinking fund projects and then the Esser projects so the community can see what's happening in their buildings. So, do you have any questions?
Questions?
Okay.
I don't see any.
All right. Well, thank you.
Nothing further on that? Okay, good on that. Okay, next, we have first hearing of the public. We're on the right track here. We'll open that up at 7:03. Does anyone wish to be heard? Anyone wish to be heard? Seeing none, that'll close at 7:03. Next item is closed session Attorney-client privilege. We need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion that we go into Attorney-client privilege.
Support. Please call the vote.
Mr. Williams.
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
Mrs. Rayford.
Yes.
Mr. Grunberg.
Yes.
Dr. Early, yes.
Okay, we'll adjourn to the conference room.
Hey, it's not Murray, Robert, you should say that. Does anybody call you that?
No.
No.
Okay, we're back open at, what is that, seven twenty-seven, we'll call it?
Close, seven twenty-eight.
Seven twenty-eight, okay. Next, we have item ten, discussion, action, Board of Education, we have contract addendums. Let's do them. Who's gonna handle those?
Excuse me, I apologize.
Do you wanna highlight those for us, please?
Um, yes, please, thank you. Good evening. Um, as the Board of Education knows, we've been working to revise and approve all of our contracts. We've done our teachers, our local one-twenty food service, our administrators, our secretaries as well. So attached in your packet, you have an addendum, we would like to extend the same addendum that was extended to our non-affiliate contracts, to our Adessa contracts, excuse me, our Edges staff contracts. Um, the staff that are Edges staff employees are well-deserving of being included and treated just the same as all of our district employees and our non-affiliates. So that is the first action item.
So you just addressed your staff right now?
Um, there are two on the addendum, I apologize, the non-affiliates. And we addressed all of our central office non-affiliate, but not our executive contracts, using the same addendum. We will be applying the same formula to everybody in the district. Um, so in your packet, you have the addendum for non-affiliate contracts, as well as the Edges staff contracts.
Okay, is there a motion to approve those addendums as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the...
Support, okay. Motion's on the floor?
I'm out of question. Um, I will be abstaining because of conflict of interest.
Okay.
For the first part.
Okay. So you, what are you saying, so you wanna, would you like them to separate so you can vote on them individually?
That's what I'm basically saying.
That's what you would like?
Yes, I would.
Uh, would you be willing to change the motion to just Edges staff first? And then we'll handle each, each one separately?
Sure.
You're fine with that?
I'll make a motion to...
Hand that motion, please?
Go ahead, Tom. I'll make a motion to, uh, approve just the Edges staff, uh, contract first.
Support. Okay, any discussion on that one? Please call the vote.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Grunberg?
Yes.
And Dr. Early, yes, I'm sorry, are you abstaining from the Edges staff?
Yes, Eds staff.
And that's it, okay. And Dr. Early, yes.
Okay, next, we have non-affiliate, is there a motion to approve that addendum?
I'll make a motion to approve that contract right now.
Support. Many?
Williams and Hall.
Please call the vote.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Rayford?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe? Mr. Grunberg?
Yes.
And Dr. Early, yes.
Okay, next, we have non-affiliate contract renewals.
Yes, thank you very much. This evening, we're presenting to you two contracts, one for, both for the executive director positions, uh, Robert Cardlasso and Lorena Rash.
Do we have a motion to approve those non-affiliate contracts?
Make motion to approve the affiliate contracts. Support.
Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Rayford?
Yes.
Mr. Grunberg?
Yes.
And Dr. Early, yes.
Okay, next item on the agenda is superintendent contract, is there a motion concerning that?
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, hold off on this for a moment, I need to think about this because I couldn't absorb all of that content.
Is there support for that? Can you say none? As for lack of support. Is there any other motions concerning that item?
Place forth the motion to move forward with the superintendent contract.
Is there support?
Support.
Any discussion? Please call the vote.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr., Ms. Rayford?
No.
Mr. Grunberg?
Yes.
Dr. Early, yes.
Motion carries. Next, we have second hearing in public, does anyone wish to be heard? Anyone wish to be heard? Seeing none, that opens and closes at seven thirty, what do you say, Robert, three? Okay, seven thirty-three. Next, we have trustees announcements, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, thank you to, uh, thank you for the presentation, um, by the executive staff and the, um, principals of each of our lower elementary preschools. I'd like to see the, um, the progress, it's, it, it makes my heart proud to see that the students are, um, being recognized for different things and actually starting to enjoy learning at a very early age. Um, it was good for, to see and hear about the, uh, principal, acting principal over at the high school, passing out cookies, just a gesture of, you know, and it, it, it just brings a, a calmness over to students, I think. And it's not the fact that they're getting cookies, but the fact that they're actually feeling or being rewarded for something, you know? Cause you can always point out the wrong, but there's more right in our students than wrong, so I appreciate just that little gesture. Um, thank you to the executive staff and, uh, in the absence of our superintendent, thank you, Christina, for doing a great job. Thank you, Wendy, thank you, board and, and public for having me and allowing me to be your trustee. And that's all. Oh, and thank you for all the new hires.
Ms. Rayford?
Yeah, I'm really grateful to see people continually to come into the district, I hope that continues. And I, I, I really wanna stress a point here about stakeholder consideration. We have to give our stakeholders consideration in all things. And when that doesn't happen, that bothers me. I have a conscience. I can't do things without the support of the stakeholders. Because they're the ones who put me here. I didn't put myself here, they put me here. So I have an obligation and commitment to them. And I will not undermine that commitment for anyone. I think that at a time when things are going a little haywire all over the country, and we need our stakeholders to support the things that we do, we need to allow them some input in the things that we want to do. I will say this repeatedly, as long as I have to. If I have to stand alone doing what's right, I will stand alone to do what's right. Because after all, I have a God that I need to stand before and answer for myself, not for anyone else. I thank everyone for coming out, and I hope you have a really good evening.
Um, I really wanted to say, I really appreciate the presentations, um, from the, the pride, showing the pictures of pride is one of my favorites. Because you can see the joy on the kids' faces during the activities. I really am happy to see the parent participation, because we keep hearing, parents come, parents come, parents come. And this is showing that parents are coming. They're seeing what's going on with their children, they're learning what's happening, and I just ask them, continue to come, continue to show up, because we need you to be there for your children. It's not, it's not about us, it's for the babies. They need your, um, participation. Um, I, I would really like to see the results from the positivity project, I think that those factors, um, to let them see the growth that they have using those factors is really gonna be good. Cause they'll understand, these are things that I need to strive for if I'm not doing it. I like the way that they're getting prizes, but I would hope that even the babies who don't get prizes, it'll get something. Or, I don't know what that could be, or how that could work. But the ones who are not doing what they're supposed to do need encouragement too. They don't just need to be left out. So I, I don't know how that could work, or what could happen, or whatever, but maybe something can be done in that aspect. Um, I, I, I wanna say thank you so much to the new hires for coming over to East Point, because you could've went anywhere else except here, so welcome to the family. Thank you.
Mr. Roscoe? Thank you for the new hires, uh, that's come over to join the family. Transparency. Transparent. Um, been on this board for some...
Um, been on this board for some time now and we've always tried to be transparent in everything that we do. We've also tried to invite the stakeholders, the, the parents and whomever, uh, to take part. And they, and they've shown that they're taking part. This is a strong board and it's a good board. And, uh, we thrive on being transparent and, and fair and, 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 uh, digging into everything that's placed in front of us. And we just, we just wanna continue to do the good, do a good work. And I believe we are doing a good work, uh, here at, uh, East Point, uh, schools. And, uh, just to say thank you again to the community for having an opportunity to, uh, stand in your stead and move things forward. Thank you for this great administration and, uh, and the work that they do. And, uh, everybody just try to be safe and, uh, try to love one another.
Well, I can't say enough about, uh, seeing the lower L's in the ELC. I mean, I have the opportunity, I guess I'm kinda spoiled. I can sit on my front porch and watch it across the street, which is really nice. Um, I have to admit, sometimes you see the kids out there and they're running around and playing and stuff like this and all they do, suddenly they do something really silly and I think to myself, what, what was running through their head that just made them decide to do that? You know, I mean, it's just little kids being little kids, right? And it's just enjoyable to see. Um, I am happy to see all the outreach that we are doing with our families and our stakeholders. And I think it's fair to say that we're gonna continue to reach out to them as much as possible. We just hope that when we put our hand out, they grab a hold of that hand and they reach back as well too, um, as much as possible. According to the day that we saw today, it looks like we're doing pretty good. Always room for improvement, but we're doing pretty good right now. Um, nice to see, um, the, the new hires and, um, congratulations to Ms. Christina Gibson. Uh, she will become our new superintendent July first. As soon as she, I don't know if she's signed the dotted line yet, but I'm anticipating that she will. Um, and I wanna remind everybody that it's just purely coincidence that our current superintendent is not here tonight. He was off on other business. Um, and don't take that as, uh, the picture is to re-approve the contract and now she's in charge as of tonight because that is not the case. Um, our current superintendent is in charge of the district and is our superintendent until the end of, uh, June when, um, Christina Gibson will be taking over. And at that point, um, there will be, I guess you will see their faces together a bit because I'm sure there's going to be some transition going on. I am looking forward as a board president, working with this board to make that transition as smooth as possible and as seamless as possible so that we can continue with the great work that we are doing in this district right now. Um, that being said, you know, usually this time of year, I'm warning people to be careful about the kids playing outside because we have more daylight and it's so nice outside that the kids are playing outside, but unfortunately it's not. Um, and I'm really hoping that that changes soon so that at a very near meeting, I can make that announcement and say, please be careful. But, um, other than that, um, we will adjourn the meeting at seven forty-two. Thank you.